Just wait on Gerald. Ready?
Yep.
All right. Okay, yep. Good morning, welcome everyone to the county council meeting this morning. If you would all rise, I'm gonna have Preston lead us in the pledge and followed by Gerald with our prayers.
Place flag please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pray with me. Most kind and gracious Father in heaven, we approach thy throne of grace in the most humble way we know how. We give you the honor and the glory you so deserve. We ask Father that you be with us, give us clear minds that we can think upon those things which are most important for the citizens of Washington County. We ask as leaders that we can always make decisions which are right and proper in thy sight. We realize that we're mere men and we make mistakes. We beg thy forgiveness. We ask also that you be with those who have chosen to protect and serve us, the citizens of this country. This is our prayer in Christ's holy name, amen.
Amen.
All right, good morning, call the meeting to order. Everyone's had a chance to review the minutes from our last meeting. If I could get a motion to approve, so moved by Preston, second by Keely, all those in favor, right hand. Thank you, motion carries. All right, our first item on the agenda this morning, we need to appoint new council attorney. We have with us this morning from Frost Brown Todd, Bo Zeller, and also Alyssa Cochran, who will be our primary contact through them for appointment of our attorney this morning, we need a motion to approve. So Gerald makes a motion, second by Preston. All those in favor, right hand. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is the county highway project. We will bring Mr. Weller from First Savings Bank up to discuss a little bit of that financial agreement. And this morning, after we have a discussion, we're gonna gonna look to possibly move forward with that. So if Aaron wants to come forward, we have a few questions by council moving forward with that part of it.
Sure, we've been in, I think about sixty days ago and had the discussion as to how to potentially finance the project. The concept was to utilize a deposit instrument that the county has as security on the financing and basically matches up with the amount of the loan. It's taking advantage of the high deposit rate environment that you see in the marketplace at the moment. And we had a consultation with David Umpelby of Path Law to ensure that the the loan structure that we had in place would qualify for tax exempt status, and he confirmed that it would. So we're kind of in a waiting pattern here just to see what happens next, but nothing has structurally changed in the concept of what we had originally proposed.
Are there some questions for council for Mr. Weller?
Yeah, how you doing?
Hey, Doug.
Just a couple of questions related to the structure. Mr. Umpelby states whether it's gonna be a bond or state law of structure.
He'd indicated, I think, bond was the path that he was leaning on it.
Okay. And it looks like local income tax would be one of the sources of repayment or pledge.
That was one of the sources that was identified, yes.
Okay. I think we'll probably get with Mr. Umpelby to chat about what approvals, specific approvals he would get from the council, I think, like importance, especially local income tax is gonna be pledged. And depending on the bond structure he has in mind, it might be additional approvals. And needs related to that too, so.
I think that would make a lot of sense, and you all could kind of work that through, and then we could report that back to the council. Because we had not made any final determinations on anything. He was just giving us the go-ahead as far as the tax exempt status at that point.
Yeah, if it's okay with council, we'll get with Mr. Umpelby to figure out the process.
Okay. Is there any other questions for Aaron about the loan structure? So I think he done a nice job going over that prior in previous meetings, so. But just wanted, with new council, we need to kind of go over that, see where we're at moving forward.
And once we have everything in place to be approved, I'd certainly come back in and go through it again if the council would like.
Okay. Yeah, we'll probably, we'll leave that done.
Sure.
Possibly next. Any other questions for Aaron? All right, if not, thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
This morning, I guess moving forward with that. All we'll need, I'll need a motion to move forward with pursuing a financial arrangement and final financing terms in an amount not to exceed $2 million with First Savings Bank. Other statutory required approvals and legal review will come at that time, but I would entertain a motion to.
Before we do that, yes. I would like, since Brad is here, if we could just clarify a few things, because he's gonna be the one that's going to be involved in accepting.
Right, correct. Okay. Brad, would you like to come forward so so we can get to the questions that council may have?
Morning, I love you.
Morning.
Morning, Brad. Thank you for being here, I know the last time we talked to you it wasn't me, but they, does here Temple, Temple, but this maximum project, have you reviewed these?
I have not been invited to that document by the commissioners, sir.
Well, that's what I want Brad to be able to get big here and talk to you.
Yep.
But I answer your questions on here, that's something that I think that I would like to have do that. There was a few questions that I had on this, would regret to get those things down, there's gonna be a few changes to this document here. Is that what you're saying, Howard, on those?
Brad, I think they have gotten that stuff.
Sir, I can't comment on that, I don't know. I have not had any conversation with the commissioners other than Mr. Marshall for nearly a month since the last county council meeting.
Well, there's gonna be a few changes to what's on the, on this right here, that's gonna be in front of me.
I'd be more than happy to review this information if instructed by the county council to do so, which has been authorized by Mr. Phil Marshall to follow through with anything that's asked by you, ladies and gentlemen.
The, it's my, the last couple meetings, the last couple conversations that I have pertain to the roof, to the HVACC, and it's on the first page on line eighteen, and then there's supposed to be a seamless roof that is supposed to be on that project.
Yes, that was agreed to, it was a standing seamless roof. And it was an addition of $18,000 that was reported back in June that Mr. Temple felt that would be more desirable for the office building itself. That was brought up for discussion by he and Paul Eckert in the meeting with commissioners, and it was accepted to have the stainless, the standing seamless roofing installed on the office hallway.
My other question on this was twenty-eight about the, because I know the last time I talked to him, that he had stated that the HVACC was not going to be in the attic, but states that on this paper here, that it's not being in the attic, it's supposed to be a separate room.
That is accurate, we decided to.
Those two changes will be done on the first page.
The HVACC was taken out of the attic for numerous reasons, the debris and the insulation up there, the access to get to the system to be able to maintain it over the years, and also the additional cost for the trusses to facilitate room, put the HVACC in the attic. We decided it was the best interest of the maintenance of the project going forward to scrap that back in June. But we did decide not to put it in the attic back in June, and all of the HVACC estimates and electrical and everything has been provided accordingly, which I took care of on behalf of commissioners with the contractors that's been accepted for use.
And is this the full, the scope that's gonna be turned in for the project? So that is the scope that's gonna be turned in, so that, Brad?
Just quickly, glancing here, as Ron doesn't speak, you know, number nine calls for hollow metal doors and frames for exterior doors painted. That is an error, that is for interior doors painted. Then you'll see the next statement after that, all exterior doors have thirty-seventy glass still ratio and are insulated, that is accurate. But that's just something I've seen right there. Please understand, I have been involved with this since last February, and I know all the information is clear. So as far as review, it would take a whole lot of time to review all this information, but certainly been involved, that's why things like this stick out to me.
Second page, Brad, I don't let exterior walls cold barned and stretched. I have the understanding that these walls would be concrete.
Sir, you are correct, there, and I've stated this in the previous meeting as well, there is no cold barned construction in any way, shape, or form on this project. Even though Grabber Post Building is a cold barned construction company, this project and all the buildings were stated to be commercial, two-by-six exterior walls, stick built. So there is no cold barn, and the schematics on the Grabber Post drawings clearly show that being framed and stick built in the salt, mixed salt building as well. So that is clarification, yes, thank you for asking that.
Then as you stated before, there would be like an eight or ten foot wall on all concrete flooring come up.
Okay, on the mixed salt building, Preston, and the salt building itself, those will have ten-foot walls. The shop, which is referred to as the garage in the proposal, will come up three feet above grade for protection of all the equipment inside. All the other buildings will protrude up one foot. Except for the truck building, and it states, I believe, it should state the truck building, the back walls to come up three feet. Be the dump truck storage building, so we'll take one million of times so I don't confuse the council. But feel free to ask, guys, I mean, that's what I'm doing for the service.
Any other questions for Brad? All right.
On option three here for the garage building, we'll need some clarification on that. We went back and forth on that several times, and I just want to make sure that that is accurate. We'll have to follow up that with Mr. Boyd, who made that decision as far as for the garage on that. The overhead garage doors for this project are very expensive, so I hate for that to be incorrect going forward, which would be resulting in something that we've not initially signed up for. So that's the only clarification I can see right off the bat that we would need to make, and that would be on line number four. If anyone else has any other questions or concern, please take a minute to look it over while you've got me here. Be more happy to help.
I know on the site separation, there's other.
I have not seen the. I don't know the answer to that, I have not, like I said again, I've not been able to meet the commissioners as far as the BOT project since the county council meeting that we adjourned. I do know that we have been provided with the latest spreadsheets, the last one that I seen was valued at seven, four point seven three two million. I've not seen anything updated after that. So I cannot comment, Miss Wishmeyer, on the B. But all I do is, we have this, I have this document now, and then I have the originals, the last spreadsheet that I was forwarded to, that's the latest documents I have, I just want to make that clear.
Our council, they have talked that this is something that we need to, should go ahead and proceed with, or is this something that we need to get additional information, is it something we can go ahead and pledge money, or we need that?
I believe that the motion that he provided doesn't formally pledge you anything. And after, you know, what Mr. Weller said about potential structure, you're gonna have additional. So I don't think there's any harm in a motion to pursue financing options on the project, it's not my liking. That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Okay, with that being said, I would entertain a motion to move forward with the pursuing of the financial agreement and the financial terms in the attempt not to exceed $2 million with First Savings Bank. It's pending further statutory required approvals and legal review. Motion by Preston, need a second.
I'll say it.
All those in favor?
We voted on this over and over, I don't care how you word it, how you say it, we voted on it many times. And not much, we're having a presidential election, if the guy that I vote for don't win, are we gonna keep voting? Do we get it that way?
Well, all we've got right now is a motion on the floor to pursue the financial agreement.
We're just pursuing financial agreement.
So that's all we've got on the floor right now.
We're just gonna get something locked in from the bank.
Right.
How to proceed with the big document we proposed for the project. We're acting for the project.
So I have a motion on the floor and a second, so we need to vote, all those in favor, right hand please. Opposed? Motion carries three, two, to proceed with financial agreement. Yes, you had to abstain. And Keely had to abstain due to conflicts provided by the council. So that motion carries three, two. All right, thanks, Brad.
If, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the commissioners have authorized me to be assistance to you guys throughout this whole process, which I feel I've done a very good job of doing. But service is still there, ongoing, can be questions, or if I can be of service to any of you guys, please do not hesitate to contact me as one of you hired.
Thanks, Brad. I, I'm just concerned that why they just kind of not be in contact to you.
There hasn't been any other, they haven't had any other BOT meetings. Pending. Thanks, Brad. Thanks, Brad. Keep in mind, council, that Brad will be retained throughout the project to oversee, to make sure that things will be done correctly, so just, just making that note. Next on the agenda is the 911 addressing. You wanna go over that, or you want me to? Okay. Basically what that is, the commissioners have asked for the 911 addressing to be done through the building commissioner's office instead of being done through the 911 through the sheriff's department. Reason for that is, is when someone comes in to obtain a 911 address, that all has to be filed through the building commissioner's office. And it is, it is much easier for Courtney to, at the building commissioner's office to do that at the same time. So not only would she be giving them their address on that new piece of property, but also applying the 911 addressing for public safety at that time as well. So what was proposed from the commissioners is they would like to, to move that duty over to the building commissioner, which, moving forward in our budget for next year, that would be a line item that would need to be added to the building commissioner budget and not done through the 911 coordinator at, at the justice center. Along with that, we can't really do that appropriation until, what, March? There would be a $3,000 appropriation for Courtney to do the 911 addressing through the building commissioner's office.
Which is not ready, it's additional.
It's not correct.
Additional work services you want.
Correct.
Yes. Just wanted to make that clear.
Well, yeah. Yes, I think it's, it's a lot easier to do it all at one time than to have to go to two separate places to have that done, so. As far as the council is concerned, the main thing we have to move there is that, prove that appropriation for her to be paid to do that through the building commissioner's office instead of the 911 like it was previously done. Do we need to vote on that then? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion. So moved by Keely, I need a second, Gerald. All those in favor, right hand. Motion carries.
That was both, it said, or, so that fifteen, that are three thousand?
Three thousand. Yes, yes, I said three thousand. Yes.
This second one I have, it's also in the document, it's it's not really, it's not an additional, he gets transferring money for his legal services to create a part-time to be able to come in with Courtney on vacation. There's like a week or two weeks this summer that she's gonna be gone, so he's gonna have a part-time commitment.
And all he's doing with that is moving.
He's transferring money.
So there's, there's nothing.
Second motion, please be made on that.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ron, second. Preston, all those in favor? All right, so motion carries. Next item on the agenda, employee salary discussion. We'd had some discussion about doing a longevity stipend for county employees, Michelle, you have a breakdown. I don't have it right. One.
Read that off.
Read the whole thing?
No. Yeah.
I think what we proposed is zero, like a longevity scale. Zero to five years, $500. Six to ten years, $1,000. Eleven to fifteen years, $1,500. Sixteen plus years, $2,000. That's how it's broke down right now. It's gonna rotate 161 times.
As a one-time thing?
As a one-time 2024 payment.
Are they gonna be taxed on this, on the bonus? From a tax person?
Yeah, have it go through the payroll, I'm just saying, we could.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be.
I mean, you can trade to the mouse, these were just tentative, I'm throwing it on you all.
Well, based on longevity, from my standpoint, based on longevity, appears to me to be the fairest way to do that, so. Here is to see what the other council might think on that project.
Well, with that being said, I agree that somebody's been in the county longer, that they should have a little bit more than somebody that's been here less than a year. Not that the person's been here less than a year is doing any less or less valuable. However, keep that in mind with the employees of the county, we are, in my eyes, long overdue, but it's the first thing, the first thing on my team is gonna be pay rises. So that's, this, me, is kind of the ordeal to get them through and help them this year as much as we can.
Yeah, like once you rub down, it's good, I think.
Is this, I know in the original, like, Ray, part-time and then full-time, something different, this getting to part-time, you say?
It will include part-time as long as they consistently have worked.
It will include part-time as long as they consistently have worked twenty hours or more permanently. I don't think that's. Yeah.
If it works less than that, is there, was there something, or not?
Questions to approve, Howard, or to fix on my duty, which I'll provide.
Okay, motion on the floor by Keely, I need a second, Gerald. All those in favor, right hand. Motion carries seven, zero.
And procedurally today, how it will proceed, since this was the first reading of that ordinance, we will wait for acceptable and go ahead and do a second reading and a final approval, so that can all be today in the same meeting.
Well, yes.
That will need unanimous agreement.
Yeah, you'll just need a motion to suspend, to adopt a second funding.
So, thanks, okay, so with that, second reading, motion by Gerald, second by Preston, all those in favor, right hand. Okay, motion carries unanimous.
Well, I think there were some questions that I had on that as well, I hate to be asking questions. Does that include the commissioners and the council and some of the other that need to be discussed now?
Well, I think.
The commissioners and the councils and some other things, how does that?
Yeah, right now I have the exceptions that will not be given this is the ones whose salaries are dictated by the state. I included everyone else except for you all, council commissioners. Just clarifying.
I didn't know if we actually had votes on those others, I think so.
You got.
But hundred and sixty thousand dollars included everybody, but the, the individual paid by the state.
For that, yeah, that's why I asked.
Yeah, I think she simplified pretty well. I think we stayed on that.
Would it be any more book or?
Yeah, well, I think there, yeah, this is motion is much, it's a second, not a final, I'm going to.
I am going to state that this will not go out until the last payroll in March is when it's going to.
Is that the effective date, they need to be employed?
Yeah.
Because we are probably have to have a date when they're employed.
Yeah, and employees' residence was terminated prior to the seventh payroll, Mr. Rees, is not eligible to receive the bonus compensation.
Is there an actual date on the seventh pay, the actual date on the pay?
Uh.
March forty-eight, March forty-eight.
All right. We have a discussion on that, we're good with that. Moving forward on the agenda, if anything else from council. Good?
Nothing further than discussing, yes.
Welcome them, we appreciate what they do for us. Howard, you have anything? Next on the agenda. I think Keely started this when she was president, so I'd like to go around the room, I think it's a good thing for everyone. So Joe, you have anything?
I have.
Keely? Karen? Ron Dale? Preston?
No.
Gerald?
I just have to publicly thank Michelle on all that was involved in putting the stuff together for us.
Okay. Yes, all of our, our county employees, we, we greatly appreciate what they do. Want to continue to have good relations with them. Our doors are always open, our phones are always on, so feel free to, to reach out if, if you need to. Thank you for, for what you do. The only thing I had this morning also, I know there's been a lot of talk about the solar eclipse coming up. There is a meeting, I was, I was asked by the mayor and also some other committee people that are dealing with that. There is going to be an informational meeting on February the eighth, so that's what, Thursday? Coming up here, that will be at the city hall council chambers at ten o'clock. And there's, there's going to be a, a person there from the homeland security. It's kind of going to go over some of the things that are going on around the area, so. They asked me to, to tell anyone that's interested in that, if you want to go to that meeting, you can, that's all. This, this Thursday, ten AM at the city hall council chamber. All right, so that's all we've got this morning, take a motion to adjourn. So moved by Keely, last second by Joe, all those in favor, right hand, thank you. Motion adjourned, or meeting adjourned.